Hello.
I just got a text to you from Fran Gerold.
Really? What did he say?
Something about a bandsaw that it flicked off.
Oh, okay. This is our first system, public surplus dot com.
You better be careful what you put on there.
Geez, I guess, uh...
Call the meeting for water for Tuesday, August 7th, 2008, 7:05 PM for the Water Pollution Control Authority and Town Council. Let's start first with salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Here.
Councillor Pandalora. Councillor Diamond.
Here.
Councillor Fornin.
Here.
Councillor Miller.
Here.
Councillor Rose.
Here.
Councillor Vidneal.
Here.
Councillor Zampano.
Here.
Motion to approve the minutes of July 10th, 2018, special Town Council and Board of Education meeting, 6:00 PM. So moved.
Second.
Any corrections? Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Fornin.
Yes.
Councillor Miller.
Yes.
Councillor Rose.
Yes.
Councillor Vidneal.
Yes.
Councillor Zampano.
Yes.
Next is a motion to approve the minutes for Water Pollution Control and Town Council, starting at 7:00 PM for July 10th, 2018.
So moved.
Any corrections? Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Fornin.
Yes.
Councillor Miller.
Yes.
Councillor Rose.
Yes.
Councillor Vidneal.
Yes.
Councillor Zampano.
Yes.
Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda. Next is correspondence and citizen's statements. We have nothing listed. Anybody have any statements? Seeing none, we'll move into unfinished business. Lake Gaylord Water Treatment Plant Sanitary Sewer Discharge Agreement, which was tabled from September.
Tabled to September.
Tabled to September. Okay, until September. Next, move on to scheduling a special Water Pollution Control Authority meeting and public hearing on Sewer Works Operating Budget and Proposed User Fee for 2018-2019.
Just quickly, due to the, we're trying to put the budget together for the Sewer Works Operating Fund. It's always a timing issue. We're waiting for information from the surrounding municipalities regarding billing. So we've always set the second meeting in September for the public hearing. And all this does is create a special WBCA meeting in, the second meeting in September to have the public hearing on the proposed Sewer Works Operating Fund budget. There's a suggested motion.
Somebody want to move that suggested motion?
Page 26 of the tablet.
I make a motion that the North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority schedules a special Water Pollution Control Authority meeting on Tuesday, September 18th, 2018, and further that the North Branford Water Pollution Control Authority acting as the sewer authority for the town pursuant to CGS 7-255 will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 18th, 2018, at 7:30 PM at the North Branford Town Hall, 909 Foxen Road, for the purpose of receiving public input on the Sewer Works operating budget and the proposed sewer use fees for the 2018-2019 fiscal year.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Fornin.
Yes.
Councillor Miller.
Yes.
Councillor Rose.
Yes.
Councillor Vidneal.
Yes.
And Councillor Zampano.
Yes.
Next item is proposed extension of agreement for operations, maintenance, services, town sanitary sewer systems, Viola Water, North America.
Okay, the town's sanitary sewer system has been operated through contractual agreement with a contractor for about 20 years now. We started with one contractor, and we've evolved over time. The most recent time, about four years ago, we put out an RFP for contractual operations for sanitary sewer system. Viola Water was the low proposer for the project. And they had been, they had been doing the operations for about, I think, nine years prior to that. But they wanted again four years ago. And as part of the agreement, provision, it was a 44-year term of agreement with provisions for additional, two additional four-year extensions, subject to favorable negotiations between the town and Viola Water that provide. Again, Viola Water's been doing an outstanding job in terms of operations, so quality-wise, they're very, very competent, very good. We sleep much better at night knowing they're around to maintain the sanitary lines and the pump stations. They've provided a fee proposal, which is on the, I think, the fourth page of what I provided in the packet. What they're proposing is basically a 2.5% annual increase from their current fee structure. So again, 2.5% per year. They originally came in at a 3% proposal of a 3% increase per year for the next four years, when we were able to get down to a 2.5% increase per year for the next four years. They're based upon the CPI index is right around the upper twos currently. Again, so we, the number they're proposing is a 2.5% increase per year over the next four years. If you look actually on that, there's a colored sheet on the bottom, calculations, base fee, maintenance repairs, annual fee, and closed-circuit TV inspections, the total fee. They have the existing 2017 year, that's existing, the current year. The escalation, they added a 2.5% for the base fee and the CCTV inspections. The maintenance repair, that's, that's a carry-through number. If something breaks, they just go off in that fund to replace the equipment or the like. Generally, that number, we've always, for the most part, underspent, but it's in there as a placeholder. So again, bottom line, they're proposing a 2.5% increase over the next four-year period. There's no proposed change in services. What they're doing right now is working very well. They do the routine maintenance on the pump stations, flushing the lines. They flush 1/5 of the lines every year, so in the five-year period, they'll have flushed the whole sewer system for us. And again, the big item is staying on top of the pump stations, because again, if something goes wrong, it can be a big problem. So there's a regular routine maintenance schedule. They take care of the generators, that's part of it. And again, the service has been very good. Interestingly, I'll just point out, Viola Water does the operation maintenance over at the North Haven Sewer Treatment Plant and their system. So it works for them, and it actually works for us. They're in the area, and they provide that service. There are other items on there, call before you dig, mark outs, and inspection of sanitary sewers, and those are put in there. They basically inflated those at a 2.5% increase as well. Those are on an as-call or as-necessary basis. I do most of the mark outs and the inspections, but if there's nights or weekends or, you know, if I'm on vacation, there, there is backup. I'm recommending that we go with another four years with Viola Water, continue operation, you know, our agreement with them for the next four-year period, subject to finalization of an agreement meeting the approval of Town Attorney, and subject to the final review of the Water Pollution Control Authority of the agreement, what has prepared and approved by the Town Attorney.
So we wouldn't typically bid this out when the contract's up?
We did do it, and when we did it, we, because of the type of operations it is, you don't want to be changing vendors on a routine, on a frequent basis, because they get to know the system, they know the little intricacies of it, so you want reliable, consistent operations. We put it out for the RFP four years ago, and we put it out deliberately for initially four-year period, with the option of two additional four-year periods.
This is, this is up over 10%.
What, 2.5% per year?
Yeah, well, plus, because it's 2.5% on top of the previous 2.5%, so, I mean, that's a lot of money. That's a, that's a big jump.
Yep. Just a little history of contractual operations. The first time it went out, there were a lot of potential vendors. The vendor pool has shrunk somewhat, in terms of contractual operations. To be honest with you, the biggest concern I would have is what happens at the end of the future, you know, if we do two more additional extensions. We may have to look at, you know, who's out there down the road, because there aren't as many people as there, there was 10 years ago. And again, the service, there's a lot of OSHA requirements and liability associated with work on pump stations and in the sewer lines. We used to have a one, pretty much a one-man operation, and we deliberately got out of that, because it's not a good situation to be in, for reliability, and like you said, when you have a pump, when you have five pump stations and something, something can go wrong on any of those, you want to be on top of the operation maintenance of them.
I understand, Kurt, that you're comfortable with this company, and you rely on them tremendously, and they have performed to your expectations. But with the amount of increase we're looking at, I think we've got an obligation to the taxpayers to see what else is out there. That doesn't mean if somebody comes in, a hair under their 2.5%, we go with them. If you're convinced they're a more qualified applicant, we stay there. But to just blindly go forward and say, fine, we'll take your 2.5% and compound it every year for the next four years, without seeing what alternatives are available, not even checking, is somewhat irresponsible.
Yeah, well, I mean, the other option, and I don't know if it's a better option or not, is, is, the last time we had one, we had one proposal.
That makes it easy, then.
Yeah, and again, it could come in higher, that, that's the other thing. The other potential option, and I'm just going to throw it out, because we did it one time before, and we did an increase. We based it, said whatever's there, and we had the increase be based on the Consumer Price Index. And that, that's an indeterminate thing, and each, each year changes. We did it that way, because we did this once before. Not locking in to the, to a set number, but adjusting it each year as we went. I mean, that, that's how that was.
That doesn't really address our, my concern in a way, that we don't know that even their base price is competitive any longer. I really just want to know what the competition is.
Especially in today's market, a 2.5% increase is probably a little high.
Yeah, like I said, I'm throwing it out.
Without a bid.
But my other concern is that this expires on September 1st in less than 30 days. So what happens, because if we put it out...
We'd have to negotiate something.
If, if we put it out to bid, it would never be done by September 1st, so then what do we do?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's a whole process to do that. I mean, we could do an interim thing if that were the case. But I gotta be honest with you. I mean, I know the concern, and maybe there's something I can do, and come back with a discussion with them in terms of the number. Again, they started at 3%, we're at 2.5%. When, the operations, again, it's not, just, you just handed a set of keys, and off you go. There's a lot involved in it. And again, that's why when we did it, we went out for a four-year term with the possibility of additional, two additional four-year term increases, because we wanted the consistency, we wanted the reliability.
Well, I, I think, I think even if the, even if the number is matched, I think we still have some sort of obligation to be looking. And there's 100, about 160 or so towns in Connecticut. I'm not sure how many don't have sewers or have sewers, but I know this isn't the only company, and we need to be looking, it's our job. That's, we're looking out after the taxpayer.
Yeah, but there's something, there's something else, again, is, and Councillor Angeloni, you know, alluded to it. It's really not acceptable to have something brought three weeks before.
We only have one meeting this month.
Well, it wouldn't make a difference if there were...
No, we should have had it before, with it expiring in September, we should have had it in June, or May or June at the latest, so that we could...
And it's not just this contract, it should be on any contract, because otherwise we have no opportunity to consider it, and it's, it's brought to us as if...
It's an automatic.
We have to do it.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not suggesting that we, we have to do it, but that there's, there's a negative to, to us not doing it, because that's a problem.
Michael, what's the turnaround time on a bid and an award, realistically?
Yeah, I, I don't know that we can turn that around. I mean, we can, we can try, but it's the specs on the, yeah, it takes about, at a minimum, six weeks.
Just put, it's a whole process. It is a much more involved process.
Then selecting is even longer.
I'm sure I can get something, we can come back with something for an interim thing to just bridge us through if that, if that were the case with them.
If they're going out to bid, I bet you they sharpen their pencil.
Well, okay, I mean, the last time there was one bidder...
That was last time?
That was the last time.
Four years ago?
I don't...
Four years ago or eight years ago?
That was four years ago. The market's changed, that's the thing. I mean, I'll be honest with you, the advantage we have is they're located next door in North Haven. I mean, and they're there for that period. There's not a whole lot of other ones out there.
See, the problem is, we don't even have a base number. We don't have a base number in the market, you know, of what, what the going rate is or what...
I will give you, the first, first time we selected them, and they basically did a 2% or 2.5% increase from there. The first time, everybody else, we were paying, I think, somebody about $180,000 10, 12 years ago. The numbers come down, and they, they pretty much held their number. The last time, I mean, the time where we had multiple bids, they were the lowest, and then they just basically inflated it all the time.
We're setting our user fee next, next month, and basically risking telling everybody that's on the sewer system, we may have to increase this, because we've got to increase costs. How can we do that in good faith, without even checking these costs? How can we just go forward, because we're comfortable with this company, and we have been for the last 10 years? That's not a justification for continuing this process. We could have done something had you come to us and met, but that's what we're going to do right now. I still think we've got an obligation to go out to the market and look. That's where I'm going with this. I don't know about anybody else.
Do you think that they would run, you know, another month, like, based on the old contract?
I tried to get this going earlier, and they were having, you know, they are a big corporation, they had to get back to me. It took them longer than I anticipated, because I didn't want to be in this position either. They withhold it, they've done it in the past.
So I think, which you guys aren't going to believe I'm saying this, but I'm living it every day in construction, the 2.5% raise is not out of line. You know, what people in Connecticut are doing is, and, and, you know, there was one thing that came out that said, you know, one on NPR that said, 40% of the population in Connecticut says they're going to leave the state in five years. So I doubt that'll happen, but, you know, that's what NPR said the other day. So at any rate, having said that, there's no help out there. So these guys are paying, but let me finish this, let me finish this. There's no problem, and we're talking about $12,000 in four years, at their 2.5% raise. I have no problem with that, because they're trying to keep their people, because they're going to jump ship and go somewhere and get more money. I do agree, I don't know that the 184 we're starting with is the right number. So that's the only problem that I have with it, is I don't know if we're starting in the right place, but you're going to hire somebody like this, we're going to pay 2.5% a year, the way it is right now in Connecticut. So having said that, I mean, I'll, I go along that we need to, we need to make sure that the, where we're starting is the right number. And again, you take the chance that, and this company, if, if they're busy, you know, we may not see this offer ever again, but at least we checked on it. You know, if they bid it, they may not bid this number, especially if they know the industry better, if they know, guess what, we're the only game in town, or, or everybody, all the bids that we've opened all year have come out different.
Well, I mean, and that's generally what's happened. I mean, the market has changed. There was a period where there was a lot of contractual operations going on, and there were, and the market, and they were getting competitive, and to be out, and people were underbidding everybody. A lot of that's changed, because they found, you know, that you can't just keep doing, they weren't making money. Now, so a lot of them are out of the business, and the numbers, the ones they're in, the numbers have changed. That's just what I've seen, so I'm...
Can you just briefly explain what do, what do we get for the $184,000 every day of the week?
Every day of the week? I mean, they do the regular routine maintenance at the pumping stations, just...
In North Haven?
In North Branford.
In North Branford.
Five pumping stations, they do the routine maintenance of that. Again, there's generators, pumps, the electrical equipment, they're on, and they have a routine procedure where they monitor everything. Generators, there's, all the pump stations have generators. They service those on a regular basis, check everything. If there's a, if there's a problem, there's an alarm at a pump station, it does happen, electrical problems and the like, they're out there, there's a blockage in the line, they're out there flushing it. I mean, those are the ones you really can't, you know, try to put a value on, because if you have a problem with the pump, or you have a blockage in line, you got to get out there to clean it and take care of it right away.
What, they bill for parts?
Parts, we have a, there's a $25,000 budget, so if parts, if they need a part...
We ever exceeded that?
Pardon?
Have we ever exceeded $25,000?
I think one time we did. Most of the time, we get about $8,000 or $9,000 back. If you don't use it, it gets returned to us. So, I mean, and that's been pretty consistent. I think one year we went over.
So Branford does theirs in-house?
They have, they have...
But they have a lot more sewers.
They have a lot more sewers, they have a treatment plant.
And they have a few guys in that crew.
Yeah, and they have...
And North Haven takes care of their own, too?
Viola Water takes care of North Haven.
Does theirs, too.
To be honest with you, that's what makes it work for them. We had another vendor that used to take care of New Haven. I think, again, the service was more costly, and it wasn't as good. I mean, I will tell you, the service has been good, and the numbers came in. They have been consistent in terms of, they've inflated it, but they pretty much, the last time, there was only one bidder, and they were the bidder, and they basically just put a 2% or 2.2% multiplier on it. And again, I'm...
Part of this is just, in my, in my view, is responsibility, right? So the responsibility to get this out at a timely fashion, so that we know, we're spending $180,000, so it's over $7,500, right? So we should know whether we get one bid back, two bids, we'll deal, you know, if that's the case, that's the case, but this is a responsibility issue, and it's quite simple. I mean, it just, so what happens, so, so as I sit here is what happens, what I, how I feel is that someone didn't do their job, so that they presented to the Town Council, so we have to sit here and make a decision on something when the job wasn't completed.
Okay, I mean, just in defense of that, I did ask for a number earlier, and I wanted to bring it to you. I didn't want to be in this position coming before you with, with a number at this point in time, but that's when I got it. The...
In my, in my view, the stuff, the information, all this bidding and, and contracts should come to us complete, background included, and anyone here, whether it's yourself or the Town Manager, should be able to speak about it. So then you're presenting it to us, and we're not the experts. We're here making sure the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. So that's the part I don't get.
Basically, what you're saying is, once a maintenance bid is up, it should be out to bid.
We should, I mean, because we have to keep everybody honest, and we have to know what's out there. The things change.
Again, the only thing, I mean, the thing, that was in the, there was that provision in here, with the intent that for continuity operations, it was a four-year period, and with a potential, again, subject to agreement on cost, two additional, the possibility of two additional four-year periods. That was, that was part of the RFP.
That was in the last bid?
That was in, in the last RFP, that, those were the terms, and that's in the agreement that I gave you copies of, you know, that section of it. That was, you know, that was the intent behind it. Because, because, again, continuity operations is a big thing. If the vendor wasn't doing anything, and the number was not high, we don't want to go there. Absolutely the case.
Well, I, I agree with that, that thinking, Kurt, absolutely, I agree with that thinking. The, the problem is the timeliness.
And again, that wasn't, that wasn't my intent, that's when I got it, and I asked for it earlier, and I, I didn't get that.
I think I kind of feel like Joe does. I think we owe to the taxpayers to get the best price that we can. And then I also agree with Al, I don't think 2.5% is out of the question.
So basically, you're, you're asking for an extension.
Well, 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 he's asking for the next two, the next, the first of the two four-year automatic renewals.
With a 2.5% raise.
For each of the years. So what, so in the last four years, because I see their maintenance is $25,000 a year in the last, from 2014 to 2018, $25,000 each year, and going forward for the next four, they also have just the $25,000.
That's correct.
So out of that $100,000 over the last four years, how much of it has been returned?
I couldn't tell you exactly, but it's generally been, I mean, it's, it's probably around $8,000, something like that. It's consistently been somewhere around that number. I, I know we had one that, because we had a problem with the pump, we went... I know we had one that, because we had a problem with the pump, we went over it. But generally, the little ones will, we've had them to return.
So what would happen if, so if it's a 12, basically a $12,000 increase over the four years, but if we reduce that $25,000 maintenance and repair to 20,000, so you're reducing it by 20,000, what happens in one of those years if we go over the 20,000?
We'd have to take it out of. The fund balance.
But that 25 really just holds the place.
That's a placeholder.
That's a, that's built.
Yeah, but isn't it figured, don't you use that in, when we have to figure the cost next month on the sewer?
On your user fees.
Yeah, that money, then we'll get the money back and they'll go back in the fund. So it revolves back into the sewer use fund. It goes back there and then resets that number. So each year, as we return it, you know, it just gets returned back to the sewer user fund.
I think we should ask them if they'll work for another month, go out to bid and have an answer October 1st.
To be honest with.
Maybe before that, it's just have the council say no and counter, no to two and a half and counter and through Kurt to say, before that step, to say two, if that's acceptable to the, to the council. And if, if it's not, then proceed with, with a continuing 30 months.
Can we do just a one year? I mean, I know the contract says a four-year agreement so that in that, in the next year, we can put it out to, you know, we have more time.
I mean, I propose that, I'll talk to them and if you want to do it one year or six months or.
Well, only because we have to set this sewer use fee next month. And how can we do that if we don't have complete information?
May I respond?
Yep.
So the question was whether or not the town can go ahead and negotiate or request a one-year extension where the contract states a four-year. I think the parties would have to negotiate for that because currently your contract says what it says. If both parties are willing to agree to that, then you could do, you could modify the contract.
As I look at the option to extend, it's so amorphous, I think we can do anything we want. The initial term is four years, subject to appropriation by the town council. If we don't appropriate 184,000, there's no deal. And it talks about the renewals, two-four-year terms, subject to mutual agreement of the town and VMNA. So what is that? It's an agreement to negotiate. It's not really an agreement to extend. We can, we can basically terminate this at any time. So if you want to go a year, we can do it.
You want to try to renegotiate it, the cost factor?
I just want to get some competing bids to know what we're talking about.
So would it be wrong with asking?
Whether 184,000 is real or exaggerated.
Just having them work at the same rate if they would till October 1st.
Well, it might have to be a little bit, I don't know if October 1st is, if everything would be complete by October 1st. I'd like to give a little bit more leeway.
I'm thinking it's going to take longer than that. I mean, it was a pretty major process to go through and put everything together and have all the information for everybody. You know, that was, that's one of the reasons why we did.
Well, then they go two months. And the rationale would be you told them that, you know, you asked for the number early on, they didn't get it to us, and we're like, we don't know what the right number is.
We're overlooking our obligation to go to public bid for anything over 7,500 bucks.
Right.
I mean, the honest answer is we're in a position where we're back to go a corner, do something that violates terms of, of the town charter or go with an agreement that we have not done our, met our obligation to go out and see if there's anything better out there. I, frankly, I'd like to see them extend it 90 days, let us go to bid, see what comes in. And, you know, maybe in a position where we say, good deal, we're happy to take it.
Ninety days is probably fair.
Do we need a motion for that or what do we need? Or do we just tell you to do it?
No.
I'll have to, there'll probably be some quick agreement, extend it for 90 days. It'll have to go through the town attorney, then come back to WPCA.
A letter submitted to the town attorney, extend it 90 days, either at this rate or if they need a couple of bucks to bump it for 90 days. I think we probably approve that.
Okay.
All right. Next item is water pollution thoroughfare application to connect two proposed residential lots to municipal sanitary sewers. Proposed subdivision property known as 67 Totucket Road, map seven, lot one.
Okay, what you have before you is a proposal to extend sanitary sewers a short distance in Totucket Road and to serve a proposed three-lot subdivision. It's approximately a 20-acre parcel on Totucket Road. There's an existing building on it, more of an industrial building in an R40 zone, a pre-existing building. It was the old Silly Putty Factory, if anybody's familiar with that, on Totucket Road. What they're proposing is to create two additional lots, one about five acres and one about 10 acres within that 20-acre parcel and relieve the remaining, about a one and a half acre, lot number two, containing the pre-existing, the old Silly Putty Factory. The proposal is to connect lot one to the existing sanitary sewer in Totucket Road, extend a lateral to it, and to service lot three by extending the sanitary sewer along Totucket Road far enough to service lot three. Lot two, the old Silly Putty Factory, is presently served and it was assessed back in the early 80s when it connected to the sanitary sewers. So again, the net result is connecting two additional residential lots to sanitary sewers and the extension of the sanitary sewer into Totucket Road by about 130 feet. Things to note, each of those properties would be required to pay a $12,300 sewer connection fee prior to issuance of a building permit, accordance with their regulations. And they'd have to, the developer slash owner would have to enter an agreement with the town stipulating to those conditions. There is a suggested motion. One other thing, then they have to comply with any other, any of the details and requirements of the connected department transportation for work within Totucket Road because that part of Totucket Road is the state highway.
Kurt, just a question, whose expense is it to extend the sanitary line 130 feet along Totucket?
The developers. That's part of their, their proposal. They would extend it to town standards.
So they extend it, they create the two laterals and they pay a fee of 12,300?
12,300.
Okay.
There's large lots, and I will point out, they're, they're pretty difficult lots. That's why they're.
They're steep, huh?
It's steep. There's some, you know, wetlands issues they have to go to the wetlands commission on.
So the, it says in here that the Silly Putty was already connected to it in the 80s, so that one doesn't pay?
That one doesn't pay because they already paid, they already paid an assessment back in the 80s. So they're not, they're not doing anything different with it.
Oh, that building's not going to become a house?
That building, presently, it's proposed to stay as is. If they were to come back and change something, maybe before the WPCA. If they were to enlarge it potentially or for something else, there may be an additional fee. But right now, that's proposed to remain as is.
I'd like to make a motion, whereas the North Branford WPCA has received a request to connect two lots to be created from the proposed subdivision of an existing property known as 67 Totucket Road, map seven, lot one, to the sanitary sewers located in Totucket Road, whereas the capacity exists in the sanitary sewer system for the projected flows from the two proposed lots. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that the North Branford WPCA approves the proposal to connect said lots to be created by the subdivision of said property into the existing sanitary sewers in Totucket Road, subject to the following conditions. The installation be in accordance with the rules and regulations governing the installation of sanitary sewers in development and in conformance with the Town of North Branford sanitary sewer details. The owner developer shall receive approval and permits from the Connecticut DOT for all sewer work within the DOT right of way prior to issuance of town sewer permits and installation of sanitary sewers within the DOT right of way. The North Branford WPCA shall require the owner of lots one and three to pay a special connection fee in the amount of 12,300 per lot. Said special connection fee for each lot shall be paid to the town prior to issuance of a building permit for each of said properties in accordance with the Town of North Branford regulations for layout and assessment of sanitary sewers. And number four, that the owners enter into an agreement with the town authorizing connection of each of the two lots to be created from the property known as 67 Totucket Road, map seven, lot one, to the existing sanitary sewers in Totucket Road in general conformance with the above referenced conditions as shown on the site development plan. Proposed residential subdivision 67 Totucket Road, as prepared by Malone and McBroom dated October 18th, 2017, revised to July 5th, 2018. And that the town manager be hereby authorized to enter into said agreement on behalf of the WPCA, subject to approval of the agreement by the town attorney. Said agreement shall be executed by both parties and filed with the town clerk prior to commencing any work on this project.
Second, discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Dooty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Miller?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Viglio?
Yes.
And Council Zampano?
Yes.
Next is new business, there's none scheduled. Last is citizen statements and petitions under water pollution thoroughfare. Now we'll move into the regular town council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a motion to add to the agenda? I'd like to add a, under executive session 15C, executive session with police commission on personnel issues.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Dooty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Miller?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Viglio?
Yes.
Council Zampano?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda under item 11, resignation and appointments. Item I, appointment of Shawna Holzer to the East Shore Health District Board of Directors.
Second. Term expires?
The 6/30/2021.
Six thirty twenty. Okay. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Dooty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Miller?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Viglio?
Yes.
And Council Zampano?
Yes.
We'll move into regular town council meeting, reports of committees, boards, and commissions, economic development commissioner.
Yeah, there is a report from Roger Salway. It includes his meetings and economic focus with respect to the activities he's been working on. So that's provided in your packet this evening. I would say I think they had a successful business under the Big Tent Thursday evening, prelude to the Poco Festival. Thought it was well-attended and speaker, of course, was Al Rose. And I thought he did a great job talking about family business and reinvesting in this community. So I think that, that struck a pretty good chord with the folks that were there.
Good, thank you. Park and Rick?
I can't remember what. There's so much happened since that meeting and I know I was at the meeting and I actually drew a blank and I can't think of it. I think it was mostly on the Poco Fest because it was just prior to the Poco Fest.
Approval of the signs, animal signs.
Yes.
Parks.
Yeah.
Next is police commission.
Okay, police commission. First thing, I'd like to hand something out, a report out to members of the town council. I think people are interested in knowing how things are going in the police department. And I think you'd be very happy if you take a look at that report. I don't want to take the time to read every item on here because it's quite a bit, but I think it makes people feel pretty good about what's happening in the police department. Just a couple of things that I would mention. The entire department now has been trained and are using body cameras. I think that's something that was critical. They've done some work in social media. Number four, which I think is very important, and I'm happy to see that Acting Chief Lovelace has made sure that the staff is beginning to review the policies and procedures of the department. He's getting involved again with the South Central Criminal Justice Administration. And there's a lot of training going on. So just so people feel comfortable in town that things are really going well with our acting chief and our acting lieutenant. And in addition to that, I would mention that there is a special meeting tomorrow evening, 5:00 PM, of the police commission.
And I also see number one, that they have finally, that chief sewer.
Finally, chief sewer has been.
Certified through collect.
He's been asking for that for years.
Yes, and I'm happy to say, see that it has been completed.
That was an easy fix, huh?
It only took many, many, many years.
About 10, if not more.
But I have to commend Acting Chief Lovelace. I think this is an excellent report and I think it's important that people in town know that things are going well in the police department.
Probably something they should post on their website. Next item is fire commission. Meeting tomorrow, Thursday.
Yeah, we meet Thursday. Last month, there was no meeting, so I have anything to report.
Next is board of education and town council communications subcommittee.
It's, I guess it's really not a meeting between the two subcommittees, but I know the board of ed has started some meetings with Marie and I. I couldn't attend the first one in regards to planning a presentation to the town council in September on the high school renovations. So they are in the planning process and they will be on the agenda for the second meeting in September. And the next meeting for that is on August 15th.
Thank you. Town planning goals, subcommittee.
We have not met, but we will meet in September. The deadline for all of the department is to return those five-year plans is the end of this month. Once I collate all the information, hopefully by the second meeting in September, we'll be able to meet as a group.
Public safety communications committee. Planning and zoning commission.
I didn't, I didn't attend the meeting, so, and wasn't called to say there was something important on the meeting, but there might have been.
East Shore Health Department, we don't have our representative yet. Next is town manager report, MBIS project update and status report.
Yeah, I prepared a memo, it's in your packet. Obviously, we're, we're getting close to wrapping that up with respect to the mechanical issues. You know, there is some preliminary or some financial summary there with respect to what's left in the allocation of 294,000. We have spent approximately 89,000, although I just received additional smaller bills to the tune of about $1,900 that came in from Perfect Tent yesterday. The big push now is tying this up into the controls and the air balancing. So that should be the, the last piece, and I'm not sure how much that will be with respect to the firm that they bring in to run those tests. But essentially, the envelope. But essentially, the envelope of the roof, the membrane is intact and I'm not hearing any reports from Bill Chody on any leaks at this point with respect to that. However, and caveat, I think we get to this process where we say, we think, you know, the roof is, and the membrane is fine, it's intact, it's got its warranty on it. We don't have any reports. The second piece is mechanicals, we're wrapping that up to get the internal air balancing and everything running efficiently, so all the motors, belts, fans, and everything is repaired and reprogrammed. Great. I think there's still an issue that we want to explore, not to, not to close this, this item out, but keep some money in there that we might, if the council agrees, to look at the other water infiltration issues that was, with respect to the, to the windows or potentially some of the mortar bricks. I mean, if you look at the front where the, where the, the letter is and where it says the, you know, MBIS, I would say to the front office there, the building just looks like it's got water damage. And I don't think we've ever pinpointed that and that's where those reports of water leakage comes in. Sometimes that driving rain comes through the windows and so forth. I think we probably want to go the extra step at some point just to try and chase those water infiltration along the, that facing the office, build, part of the building that has the, the name on the building there, faces the, faces the tennis court, faces the fields. And I think there's some directional rain that happens, some problems that we have when we have that. I don't know if it's, if it's, if it's the mortar brick or if it's the windows, but there's still, I think, something coming on when we have those very specific events that are driving rain in a certain direction. But otherwise, yeah, we're coming near the end of this process to recommission the, the system, make it optimal, and then incorporate Perfect Temp and Eagle Rivet to do the ongoing maintenance and checks on the system going forward. And I think probably also revisiting the, the issue with Eagle Rivet, they're the, they're the roofers, the membrane, the drains, and so forth. I think that might have to be stepped up to four, you know, four times a year rather than just twice, you know, spring and fall. Just, I just don't think the council, I certainly don't want to revisit this issue where, you know, they've, they've got a lot of issues with, with debris up there and, and maintenance, you know, issues that we don't have to come back here in five years, three years, a year from now and revisit the same issues. So as much as I'd like to wrap this up, I really want to be thorough to get through to, address those issues with the mortar and windows.
So I'd just like to actually thank Michael for all his hard work on this. We all remember, you know, we dumped it on Michael when the Board of Ed basically said, "Now we got a fifty million dollar school, it's going to leak." And he's taken it by the horns and done really well with it. So, you know, I don't hand out compliments very often, but he deserves one.
Thank you. I, I think the other telling issue will be when you hear from the teachers, when they come back. And I think when we get through that, I think they're, you know, that's, that's when we'll have a better, I'll have a better feel for knowing, you know, do we have leaks that are unreported? That's, that's the thing, it's hard to know in the summertime, so. And then, of course, you know, we've, we've been deluged with, with, with rain and until we have the teachers back in there, we don't really know.
You know, when the balancing, the air balancing is going to be done?
I would hope in the next two to three weeks, yeah. They, they finished up, I went through some of the reports.
Before start of school, then?
They're down to the last few items of a switch and insulation. And then the programming was already done with ABS in terms of the weekend programming to bring the building down. Air balancing should be in the next two to three weeks.
Thank you. Next is Route Eighty Farm River Bridge?
Yeah, I, I just put that on there. I'm not hearing any reports of, of any complications, anything like that from, from residents or taxpayers and that's, that, that's, I mean, obviously, you got to slow down, there's a bit of an S there and, but it's, it's manageable. And I've checked in with Kurt on a, on a periodic basis and I don't think there's anything to report.
Do you still have weekly meetings?
Moving forward.
I remember we talked over weeks, yeah, there's no big changes. Again, it's too tight in the year. That's, we're trying to make sure we can kind of wrap up the, the, the change is not late enough.
I think they did a great job of moving that over. I know some of the businesses are not really pleased with it, but I think it was the best solution to keep that road. And traffic does move through there, you just have to slow down. And, you know, hopefully they do keep to their timeline and they're done and wrap it up before the end of this, of this year.
I'll take the updated, if any.
And next is Town Welcome and Park Identification Signs.
Yeah, Kerry's been working on this and provided a memo with respect to the, the signs. In fact, two, two have been put up, East Haven and Guilford sign, I didn't see the Guilford sign, but I saw the East Haven look, look nice. Set it back a little bit in terms of sight line, so it's not exactly in the exact same spot as the old one, but it is up. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to see those. The other one for Northridge should be put in later this week, if not, maybe even tomorrow. I think, yeah, actually tomorrow, I think Kerry's going out to see that one installed, so.
So the one at Company Four, who paid for that one, Company Four?
Yeah.
Or the, I mean, because I, there's, I mean, it, the sign for the ambulance building matches our new signs.
Right. My, my understanding is they paid for that and I-
Okay, I mean, it looks nice.
Yeah, Miss Fund did pay for it, yeah.
It does look nice.
Yeah, looks great.
It looks very nice.
Yeah, so just, you know, take a, take a ride out of it. Northridge should go up tomorrow and then we'll go through the, the rest of those sign, park signs. They're in fabrication and we'll be able to get those out soon as we can.
And next item is Police Department Renovation Update.
Yeah, unfortunately, I was hoping to have notes from the architect and engineer, but he got sidetracked and was not able to pull together those notes. I know Fran was on site with them to do the walk and if you want to hear from, from Fran and then I'll push the architect and the engineer on getting those notes to the, to the council. But my understanding is they had a successful site, site walk and, and maybe Fran, if you want to elaborate on some of those comments.
Yeah, we just looked at three sites that the possibilities where it could go and which, they were just looking at three different sites and trying to figure out which, and is that going to be the council's decision where it goes, but just trying to get a feel of the, there's three lots that are possible. And I'm going to do some, some test holes just to see what the material's like. There's no real decisions made. You guys are going to make that, but I think the architect and Fran put some together.
Yeah, what, what you essentially looked at was the softball field by, by your, your entrance across the, the, well, on the other side of it. Yeah, the Mooney-
The lot part of the-
Poco Fest.
Did, did we vote to do a new building?
No.
I don't remember doing that.
No.
No, they're just getting information together, that's all.
I mean, they came in with a, with drawings for a much larger building than I think is called for here and there's been no response back on that. And now we're going out and looking at sites? You know, this is being pushed into another decision that is, is not warranted at this time. This is-
I think, I think when people looked at the cost, it looked, it appeared that a cost of a new building would be cheaper than a renovation. And I think, I think what we're doing now is just looking at sites to see if, if that possibility exists to go with the new building, where would be the place to put it? I don't think, no one's made any decisions. I think it's important, and it's important that Fran be part of that when, when the architect goes out and looks at Fran.
This is the same, this is the same situation. We, we had, we had a, people come in and they gave us a proposal of what, what this could be done. Remember when we had the proposal for free? And they, they came in with what was described by some people as a Taj Mahal. It was much bigger than, than we needed and they were drawing it up for a town larger than ours, for needs greater than ours, and this is no different. And, you know, this, this is, the, the police department needs help, but we're being, we're being pushed in the wrong direction here and this is wrong.
Are we expending costs for the architect to do these site evaluations?
No, I, I think it was just, it was just a field, field walk and, no.
I mean, you kind of want to look at what is out there, you know, like you were saying, Mr. Will, that, you know, they want to see, is there other costs other than what they're looking at and where, where it would possibly go? And is one lot going to be more expensive to build on than the other? Just try to refine some numbers. I don't think anybody's pushing anything down anybody's throat, telling me a decision. They're just getting, collecting more information and I think it's the right thing to do.
Well, we did pay for the architectural drawings.
Oh, yeah.
So we did pay.
We paid for their services.
We agreed to pay and we did pay.
I also think that part of the, when we went through that presentation, one of the, one of the pieces there that was accounted for was the additional or the cost for a lease of, of space. If you were to try and renovate in place, you would have to move the department to some place and was a very large, I think almost eight or nine hundred thousand dollars to do that. This was just a natural, you know, opportunity exercise to say, okay, if we, we could save money on, on that, let's explore, take a walk around that property that we, we own and control to, to save within that budgetary item. So it seemed like a next logical step to take a look and assess and just walk the site with, you know, Fran and put some notes together.
My personal feeling is I just think it's a, just another necessary step to gather all of the information so that we have it when it comes time to make a decision. There has been no decision in regards to it, but I think we all needed more information as to which way it was going to go and just to have the information. I, personally, I don't feel that we're being pressured into.
It's kind of really an exploratory stage. We haven't-
Right.
Gathering, as you said, it's gathering information.
We have a conceptual building, whether everybody agrees on it or not. We have a conceptual building and now we have to find a place to put the building.
But do we have an overall conceptual plan of what the town looks like? For instance, we have all this property where the, the new fields are, the police station, the other softball field, the town works, the Potato Fest area, we have a lot of property there. I always thought that somehow we were going to try to, the town was going to try to create that as becoming the center of the town at some point. So I would think that if that's true, we would have to put that into consideration too, right? Where you put the, what I'm saying is where you put the police station.
Right, and I think that, I think that will become part of the discussion as we gather more information.
But the, but the problem is, you know, and, and I don't, I just have a problem with the way Mayor Duty expresses it. To say that we're, we have a conceptual building and we're looking for a place to put it, I have a problem with the conceptual building is, is what I'm trying to express.
The conceptual building is what the architect drew up. If you have a problem with that, we understand that. But the conceptual building we have to work with now is what we paid the architect to draw up.
That may not be the final building. Because we may not-
So it's just a conceptual, it's not the actual building we're looking for a spot to put on. It's a conceptual building.
But the, the conception is for a, a space that makes it necessary to put elsewhere, not to add on to the building, not to add on to the existing building in, in the existing place. If the, if the concept were changed, then, then, then we, we might be able to be expanding the building. They're, they're, they're making it much larger and it isn't necessarily, necessary that it be so. And that's what's pushing it to another location is, is what I'm, I'm thinking on this. And, and that's, that's where I have the difficulty.
Marie, you were at those meetings, right? This is what, this is a projected twenty-five-year building, right?
Right.
Twenty-five-year growth building.
And we want to make sure that we take care of things now, that you wouldn't be paying, you know, thousands more for that you need in ten years. It's still, we're still a little exploratory, George. We haven't made any, we're trying to get as much information as we can, okay? And that's all we're doing at this point.
I want to come in and stand, the renovation of the existing police stations are the questions?
It's not out of the question, but we-
Cost factor.
The cost factor was one thing.
And I understand what George is saying. He's saying that the renovation of the existing is based on the same spot of what you would need for, I think it was a force of thirty or thirty-five, I forgot how many. And that's what the renovations of the existing building and the cost are based on that. And he's saying, well, maybe it should only be twenty-eight people for a twenty-five-year period or whatever. You know, that, that number is to be, to be determined, but it might not necessarily drive it to a new building. But I still think we need to gather this information to make a, to make a decision.
And we have to think about the future.
Right.
Well, where are we, where does that leave the council in terms of where's the next, the next step? Is the council ready for September or, or an October meeting to?
I think we need, I think we need a report from the architect based on that, about his walk through with, with rain.
Okay.
That would be the next step.
Then, then just to, to hear back from the architect at the next-
I thought at one of our meetings, we had a consensus that it, it wasn't beneficial to refurbish the old building.
Yeah, I don't think, there may have been, but there was no, there was no vote, but there may have been consensus. But I, I think you, you want to structure it such a way that you bring this back in September with the architect and at some point reach a threshold question of, are you renovating in place or are you moving down the road?
Right, we have to make a decision whether we renovate or we build. And once that decision is made, then it's where.
But we need, we need a report from the architect based on his-
Right.
Surveying of those various properties.
Yeah, that, yeah, that helps.
I think we need, you know, we need the architect in the room when we're going to figure out which way we're going. With what they showed us, was it last meeting?
Yeah, the last meeting, July meeting.
We need the architect.
With what they showed us, I, I will agree that, you know, the best, the best building for our dollar was, was the new building. I'm not saying that I agree we need a new building, but with what was put in front of us-
Correct.
The best deal was the new building. You know, so I think that's where we need to hear from the architect and, and the police department on, you know, you know, what, you know, what, what's in the additions or what's in the new building that's not in the, that we can't get in an addition and, and then, and then the other thing is, and, and, you know, somebody said it earlier, that nine hundred thousand for relocating and we've all walked through there. You're not going to remodel that building with them in there. So, so that, almost a million dollars, we could use it wisely in, in, in the building somewhere if, if we didn't have to do it. But I mean, I'm still like, then, then what do we do with a building? We have another empty building in town. So I think we need a whole big discussion with the architect and decide which way we're going.
Engineer to tell us what, what out of three lots is probably the best.
But I do think he owes us a report based on what he observed.
Yeah, I think you can incorporate that in. The question is whether you want him for the first meeting, the next meeting, or, or the second meeting in September. And I think you already-
I'm not going to be here on the second meeting in September, so.
What's that, I'm sorry?
I said I'm not going to be here on the second meeting in September, so.
First meeting, that's fine.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Next is Community Events and Presentations, Potato and Corn Festival Recap.
Yeah, I just, I, I think it was Lauren, I don't know if you want to speak to it, I got a, I got a quick email from Jen who just wanted to, to thank the, the council for their support, the staff at Town Hall, Public Works, North Branford PD, Fire Department, everyone in the community center was a huge factor in, in making this, this event a success and we appreciate all your help. We will back with more information, numbers at the, at a later date, but at this time I just wanted to extend my gratitude for all of the support, help, and answers to many questions, not only this weekend, but throughout the year leading up to the festival. Thank you for making my first full year as coordinator as smooth as possible and we're already looking forward to two thousand and nineteen. And that's, that's from Jen. And that's, that's from Jen. And I don't know if Lauren wants to add anything to that, but it.
I just, I want to do a thank you as well.
Yeah.
And especially for, uh, the town council, they'll let us try to be a reminder for the first time this year.
Yeah, I heard it went well.
Everything that I saw at Poco went very well. I know there were many other members of the council there, but I saw very little that was a problem, and I saw everyone doing just a bang-up job, so I think it went very well.
Next item, citizens' statements, petitions, and correspondence.
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor. I think Councilor Zampano hit the nail on the head. You need a master plan for that whole center part of town. You can't just look at where the police station should go, and that might be the best spot for the Town Hall to go. So if we're going to look at the Town Hall seriously moving to a central location and put this back on the market, to, to do one piece of it, police station only, really doesn't do it justice because it might be the spot you put the Town Hall, if that's what the council wants to do, and create the centralized campus. So it needs to be a global perspective as to what is that center, that centerpiece of town going to look like? Is Town Hall moving up there? Yes or no? You know, we talked about that for a hundred years, you know? So to do just one piece of it really only does it, does it the whole benefit? You got to get the whole package and say, what's the long-term goal? Whether it's ten years, twenty-five years, are you going to move or not? Because to put the police station there, it might be the ideal spot for the Town Hall. Then what do you do? Or do you put the Town Hall where the police station was? Knock that down and put the Town Hall in that footprint? That might be part of, part of the game plan. But you need to look at the whole package, I think, not just do police department, where are you going to put that?
My personal vision is to make it big enough so you could add the Town Hall right on to the police department.
Done in several towns, certainly.
And you have your campus right there.
Sure. So that's, that's.
But that's, that's my personal opinion. So your piece of property is going to be big enough to incorporate the police department plus the Town Hall attached to it.
Certainly.
Or a little breeze way between them.
Yeah, no, that's, that's certainly, certainly, you know.
With the same design, so it matches.
But I guess, I guess Councilor Zampano, I think, to echo what he was saying is, do we have a game plan? We had, we had a plan probably fifteen years ago under a couple other managers where there was some schematics drawn out of how to lay that property out, and it kind of sits on the shelf and never saw the light of day again. But do we want to have a central, do we, I think, you make a committee up, whether it's Marie's committee or some other committees, say, let's look at the global picture, and where do we see the town twenty-five years from now? What's going to be in that center part of town? Are we moving the Town Hall? Threshold question, yes or no? If not, stay here and just waste this beautiful tax opportunity we have that we're wasting here with not getting a dollar of taxes?
I hate to interrupt you, but Al said this is on the market.
I, I agree with you, but again, do we have a game plan? Where the, where the next step's going to be? So I, my only point was, don't look at it as solely relocating the police department, look at it in totality of that whole centerpiece of land, make a, make a master game plan.
It would, you know, it would be nice to have a, a vision, a drawing, which is a vision of our town in whatever timeframe it is, and it's posted somewhere in the Town Hall, so when visitors come in, they see what.
We did, we did have a vision at one time. I forget who drew that up.
It does exist.
Uh, the name is.
I still have that one in the office.
Yeah, yeah, look at the name on it or send it down to Mike, and maybe we could re, relook that.
Bill Sabres, Senator, Sunset Drive, reference to the sewer contract. I don't remember if it was said there, the past four years, was there increases coming up to this year? I don't remember that being said.
In the original contract, yes, there was an increase each year.
Was it about the same as two point five or?
It was about the same.
Yeah. Uh, it's, it's a tough one, but I, my point was, they come up here and say, I've been watching a lot of papers, bus contracts, these contracts are three, four, or five years up. What happened is, when they really negotiate, they give them that first year, they take nothing the second year, maybe they give something the third year, nothing on the fourth year. West Haven bus contract, that was in the paper for weeks. I know I'm not comparing apples and apples, but apples and oranges, but that's a thing to, to look at. It's, it's negotiations. Some of those two point five figure looks like an arbitrary figure just thrown on every year. People will accept it and make it look like it's not a lot, but acceptable. The other thing in the police department, I believe they need a renovation. Fortunately, I haven't had the need to be inside the police station for any reason, but anyway. And I want it to be renovated, I know you talk about it all the time, but you're tossing this ball around like crazy. December's meeting, last December, I looked it up, the consensus was, and there was no vote, consensus was, when Smith and Petrazzulli got this twenty thousand to do the drawing, that, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but it was supposed to be a million and a half to two. Nothing was said about relocating and all that. I think you can renovate that building for two million dollars? Give me two million, I'll renovate that building. I, I'm not, you know, long-term planning, I cannot, yeah, that's another, and it, and this, this needs to be done. Police station, you've been talking about it a long time. But I, I just think, I think Smith and Petrazzulli are the Cadillac people of the, of the, I think you need to look at somebody else too. Here again, the bidding, you've only heard from them. Thank you.
Anybody else? Move on to resignation appointments. Reappointment of Ashley Joyner to the Conservation and Inland Wetlands, term to expire twelve thirty-one two thousand and nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I got a question for Anthony. On the, when the, when the wetlands commission didn't act on that property and we had to send it to the state, what did that cost us?
I'd be lying to you, top of my head. I could find out for you. No, I don't remember.
I remember an initial bill of ten thousand dollars, and that was not the final bill.
Okay, so, I'm not sure, I'll see where it falls, but, you know, I have a problem, and I know at the time, I thought to myself, well, I can't appoint these people because it was a very tough decision that they had to make, and it had to deal, the main one had to deal with the propane facility, but they weren't able to do their job. They didn't set, they didn't separate, okay, there isn't a square foot of wetlands on this property, and by not doing the job, you know, it had to go to the state and cost us money. So I would wonder why somebody would want to be put back on when they weren't able to do their job in the first place, but that's all I have to say on that.
Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
No.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
No.
Councilor Viglione.
Yes.
Councilor Zampano.
No.
Yeah.
It's five three.
Next is reappointment of Melinda Fonda to the Zoning Board of Appeals, term to expire twelve thirty-one two thousand and nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Viglione.
Yes.
Councilor Zampano.
Yes.
Next is reappointment of Stephen Whalen to the Permanent Project Building Committee, term to expire eleven thirty-two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Viglione.
Yes.
Councilor Zampano.
Yes.
Next is reappointment of Louis Fonda to the Permanent Project Building Committee, term to expire eleven three two thousand and twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Viglione.
Yes.
Councilor Zampano.
Yes.
Next is reappointment of Ken Newbig to the Build and Code, Build and Code Board of Appeals, term to expire seven thirty-one to two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Viglione.
Yes.
Councilor Zampano.
Yes.
Next is reappointment of Stephen Scavo to the Conservation Inland Wetlands, term to expire five thirty-one two thousand and twenty.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Uh, no.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
No.
Councilor Viglione.
Yes.
Councilor Zampano.
Yes.
Next is appointment of Dan Arman to the Economic Development as an alternate, term to expire twelve thirty-one two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Viglione.
Yes.
Councilor Zampano.
Yes.
Next is appointment of Carl A. Ford III to the Ethics Commission, term to expire twelve thirty-one two thousand and eighteen.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Viglione.
Yes.
Councilor Zampano.
Yes.
Next is appointment of Shawna Hauser to the East Shore Board of Directors, East Shore Health Board of Directors, term to expire six thirty-two thousand and twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Viglione.
Yes.
Councilor Zampano.
Yes.
Moving to unfinished business, discussion in action, review and set public hearing date for proposed ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash two, chapter forty entitled Fire Department.
Following up on the last meeting, there was a question regarding the eight dollars per thousand, whether that was like a, a market price, and as you could see in the packet, I included the ordinance from North Haven, and basically I plagiarized the heck out of it. It's basically their, their ordinance as it relates to that part of it. I do have an email I received from the East Haven Fire Chief, like, or North Haven Fire Chief. Another revenue source we haven't captured as of yet is charging for inspection, similar to us, based on the occupancy classification or permit renewals. The building fee schedule is more important to me and a bigger revenue source, however, perhaps in the future I'll look to pursue this, similar to us again. We received minimal objection from citizens when this was proposed, with the biggest concern being residents wanted to see this revenue back into the fire service and not viewed as another tax. Since implementing this about eighteen months ago, we have collected one point two million dollars, with eight hundred thousand of it coming from Amazon. So there's, there's money out there. So even the four hundred thousand dollars outside of Amazon in eighteen months is real money. So again, the eight dollars per thousand is what North Haven is using currently, and the other one that I found. A lot of the towns have graduated rates, but in this, in this flat fee percentage basis, I found that North Haven, and I believe it's Mansfield, is seven fifty per thousand here.
I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council votes to send the attached proposed ordinance for fire marshal fees to a public hearing on September eighteenth two thousand and eighteen at seven thirty PM in the Town Council chambers.
Second.
Seven thirty, you're seven thirty, seven thirty.
At the WPCA meeting?
Yeah.
For Sewer fee?
Mine's seven forty-five or something.
Okay, so I'll say for a public hearing on September eighteenth at seven forty-five.
Second.
Anthony, where'd you say, I thought, I heard you say they, the citizens in North Haven wanted the money to go where?
Back to the.
Oh, back to the general.
Uh, the biggest concern, residents wanted to go back to the fire service and not get it as no tax. Our proposal is to put it as another, as general fund revenue, not to put it towards the fire department. Just like building permits go general fund revenue. So that's our proposal, is a little bit different than his. I guess he must have a separate fund that he's using for replacements and stuff like that. Our proposal, as it currently is, is to put it as a general fund revenue.
Okay, thanks.
Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose. Counselor Vigliano.
Yes.
And Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next items, future budget plan and initiative.
I have nothing.
Next item is consider and act on resolution to finalize Board of Education inquiry.
Do you have a proposed motion on that? Did, that's the one when I had asked to talk to Vin about how that would be worded?
Yeah, I thought he was gonna talk to you about that. That's the way I left it with him.
Oh, no, I, he has not talked to me. So I guess we'll table it then until,
Yeah, just table it.
Till the next meeting.
Be August.
At least September.
September fourth. Be tabled to September fourth, two thousand eighteen.
Okay.
Do we need to table it, or do you wanna just make a motion to, make a motion to do what you wanna do, have a discussion and do it?
In my brief conversation with Vin, he was, it seemed like he thought it was something you could just say exactly as Counselor Rose had just said.
Oh, okay, that's, I mean, I'm.
However, you wanted to bring closure to this, there was no specific language that he mentioned.
Although if I can, if I can speak to this briefly, having communicated with Attorney Marino, our recommendation is that there need be no action taken on this specifically. If you desire to do so, then a motion may be required, but ultimately, if the Board of Education has submitted a report, if you're satisfied with that report, you can simply accept it and not take further action, which would allow you the opportunity, should any issues come up in the future, to revisit this. If you want to do otherwise, then you would require a motion.
So we had a motion that we voted on to send it to the State Attorney's Office, and we never did anything but we decided not to send it until we heard from them. So you're well aware of that, and that motion is out there, voted on.
Right.
And we don't have to do anything?
So? Our recommendation is that, you know, at this point in time, that there need be no action taken.
I guess you could go the, I mean, to motion to rescind, but doesn't have, from a procedural standpoint, might have to come after the very next meeting, when this has been, this has been months. I'm not, I'm not sure, I don't have the, the Roberts Rules of Orders in front of me, but you, you can do a motion to rescind, but anyway.
But we don't have to.
No.
I'm fine. I don't know how everybody else feels.
Yeah, I, I just don't want it sitting out there. I mean, because it's been on our agenda and the board just came to us at the last meeting, but nothing happened after they did their presentation, and we talked to them at the six o'clock meeting. Nothing happened in our regular council meeting. So I just wanted to clothe, put closure to this, and if that's the way you do it by doing nothing, then I guess it could come off the agenda.
Well, they gave us their plan and then basically what action they took, so, I mean, they did something. The Board of Ed did something.
Correct, and so ultimately, if you're satisfied with the actions that the Board of Ed has taken, you, you know, they've presented their report and you can leave it at that. I don't think you need to take any further specific action, and that leaves the issue open to the extent that should there be any conduct that causes concern in the future, you could revisit it, and that's why we recommend that there be no formal action taken.
So I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with this. I mean, I think that we all were happy with where the Board of Ed is at today, or at least speaking for myself, but I'm not happy that they have the same attorney who all of us know either was giving them wrong information, or else we were sold a bill of goods by the superintendent and some of the past board chairs that he was giving them obviously the wrong information. He's refused to talk to us. He's refused to talk to our attorney, and, you know, he was blatantly wrong. So, so I think if we just leave it the way it is now?
Right. That's fine with me.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, we can't touch that attorney, but.
I know we can't, but, you know, that was ridiculous, so. And hopefully, this board will, will address that at some point.
Next, we'll move into new business discussion in action, local adoption of updated South Central Regional Multi Jurisdictional Hazardous Mitigation Plan.
Good evening again. The South Central Regional Council of Governments initially prepared a hazard mitigation plan in two thousand fourteen that was adopted for about ten towns in the region, and, and that plan identified potential hazards like tornadoes, hurricanes, winter snowstorms, floods, sea level rise and the like as, as problems within the region. They identified it for each municipality, came up with a sort of a cost analysis, and came up, basically a very voluminous report, sitting under my desk. That's why you don't all have copies of the old plan or the new plan, because it's hundreds of pages. They did that two thousand fourteen. It was good, it's good for five years, and recently, the council governments, with the help of participating municipalities, updated the plan for this time fourteen municipalities. Basically, it's an update of what they did in two thousand fourteen. I think probably the biggest thing that showed up here now is sea level rise and climate change have been identified as major changes. They don't affect us so much, but the coastal communities, it's a big hit. Were required to have that, this plan in place for a lot of grant applications, so it's, it's a very beneficial plan that was put together. It's available to the urgency operations director, police, fire and the like. We have copies in our office. I don't have copies, full copies of the new plan because they haven't printed it yet. It's online, it's available on South Central Regional Council of Governments website. FEMA has reviewed it, and they've, they've recommended the South Central Regional Council of Governments, each municipality has to adopt the plan. They recommended resolution, that's at the back of the packet regarding this items, is prepared by South Central Regional Council of Governments under the direction of FEMA, and they're looking for all municipalities to adopt the plan. Again, like I said, it's, it's a little bit of an update from the two thousand fourteen original plan. I've included in your packet sort of an index of the items included in there. Again, fourteen, they looked at each of the fourteen towns in detail and, and with specifics, three cities, and then overall actions and comments through the reading.
We have a resolution to adopt the mitigation plan. Somebody wanna make that motion? I know, just, just the two thousand eighteen South Central Multi Regional Multi Jurisdictional Hazards Mitigation Plan update. Somebody just wanna update it?
I'd like to make a motion, Town of North Branford, adopt the resolution, the two thousand eighteen South Central Region Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan as presented to the town council. It is on page fifty-five in our packet, and I would also like to make a note that the clerk attached that whole attachment as part of the minutes, so that it's, so the public can see what it says.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Vigliano.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next item is discussion on a request from B O E to add additional security cameras.
Okay, so at, at the meeting that we had with the Board of Ed at last month's meeting, it was discussed in executive session in regards to security measures, and one of the items that was discussed was the security cameras throughout the district, and there are some locations that need some updates. So the Board of Ed, we did request that the Board of Ed submit some estimated cost, which they have, so I would like to make a motion that we do a request for proposal for additional security cameras for the Board of Education as outlined in the memo sent to us.
Second.
Not to exceed, or just see what it comes back at?
We can see once what it comes back at, I guess.
Okay.
And if you recall, the, when we reallocated the additional eight hundred thousand dollars in ECS grant money, there was forty-eight thousand of that dollar amount was put into our contingency account. So I think that the cost of these cameras, additional cameras, would be a good use of that money that was put into contingency. So, and I would expect that the Board of Ed will handle writing the R F P and for this, because I'm sure there's requirements, because, so that it's compatible to existing equipment and with the police department.
Yeah.
Because it's all connected.
I will certainly have that conversation with Scott on their, their side. If, if, I don't know if they typically did or if they've done R F Ps, but I would, your suggestion is right on point, that let them do that, they have all the specs for their thing, but if they need assistance, I'd be glad to help them, and if we need to pull it over here on our side with them supplying the specs and we issue it, that's okay too. We'll do that. But I'll, I'll, I'll put that forward to Scott and let him, let him go forward with it.
So how would, if they write the R F P and send it out, are we the final authority that approves it, since we're funding it?
We may, we're gonna approve it.
Okay, so it'll come back to us?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure on that. So they'll put it out, review it, and make their recommendation to us? Is that how that works then, or?
They could write the R F P and work with Michelle, and Michelle could do the logistics and put it out, advertise it, line yards, maybe the specs could come from Bill or Don or Scott. Well, that's, yeah, it might work, it might work better, it might work easier that way if we, if we pull it in-house to pull the specs, and that way it comes, comes here to the council.
Okay.
For, for approval.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Unless they have some, unless there's some security issues on their end and they wanna do it, I'll just let them know that they can do that, but as you said, it's gotta come back here for the council to, to approve that.
The award comes back to the council.
Award's gotta be done by the council.
Okay, that, that's fine.
Okay.
The motion is on the floor.
Who's second?
It's, I'll second it.
So, discussion, any further discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Vigliano.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Okay, next is sale of state-owned land, two thousand Foxen Road, Connecticut Route eighty.
Yeah, this is a request from the state. I put together a packet, a memo in your packet that's a recommendation of the town engineer, town planner, having reviewed this, that this is not a property that would be beneficial for, for the town at a cost of eighteen thousand dollars, so we would respectfully decline and report back to the state if we're not interested.
Where exactly is two thousand Foxen?
It's a triangle.
Front of Midway Auto.
Yeah, okay.
It's that area that the, the state, the state took and they lost their setback, you remember, and that became an issue for some of their zoning issues.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby declines the offer by the State of Connecticut D O T to purchase land at two thousand Foxen Road and authorizes the town manager to respond to the State of Connecticut.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, by, just by way of discussion, and I certainly intend to support the motion because I think it's in the interest of the town, but I'd just like to point out that this property owner has apparently, according to complaints I've heard, not complied with some site issues that have previously been put on them, and in that regard, it's a little disappointing, but those are just comments.
Where exactly is the, is the property, like between, between Midway and?
Right in front of it.
Yeah, right in front of Midway.
It is, it is their property line.
Okay.
Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Vigliano.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is approval of collective bargaining agreement with Department of Public Works.
Yeah, that's not ready. We'll have to table that for September.
Okay. Discussion on lifting higher freeze for the police chief?
I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby lifts the hiring freeze to allow the police commission to proceed with filling the position of police chief. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Vigliano.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is discussion on lifting the hiring freeze for custodian for Parks and Recreation Department.
I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby lifts the hiring freeze to allow the town manager to fill the part-time position of custodian in the park rec department.
Discussion?
Yeah, what, what, is that the, the board of the Stanley T? Is that what that's for?
Well, yeah, well, it's the park rec portion of the, of the building. So I believe Lauren, he works during the day, correct? I mean, 'cause he sets up and breaks down from stuff at park rec and things.
Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Vigliano.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is review and approval of specifications for R F P number three, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, painting for sixteen seventy-five Foxen Road.
Mayor, I think we skipped over.
You skipped over.
Next is review and approval of lease with Totoka TV for sixteen seventy-five Foxen Road.
Yeah, so the, the building's been taken for a while, and Walter Mann, who's here tonight from, I believe he's still here somewhere, Walter? Yeah, oh, it's behind the building, sorry. Approached, talked about their interest in the senior center as a potential move for them away from their current rent, so we started exploring the opportunity, and I put together a memo to outline what would be involved in, in bringing that building back up to code. There would certainly be a significant investment in capital to make those repairs and codes, but I think this is, as it turns out, at least on the face of it, to be a great adaptive reuse for that building in the sense that the operation for Totoka TV is not really traffic intensive, if you will, in terms of, of clients or patrons that you would think of a, of a normal retail establishment. The parcel or the property only comes with fourteen spaces, I believe, in, in that parking lot. It's a very small, I think the council's familiar with that, a very small piece of, of property, but they are, are interested in, in this and looking to explore this opportunity with a multi-year lease for the facility. If we do the, obviously have to do the capital investment and repairs, but I think we can recoup that in a, in a five-year lease, and again, the, the numbers in the, in the memo in the lease are, are placeholders that certainly the council can adjust and we can negotiate. We certainly would only go forward if, if there were a lease that Vin Marino has taken a look at. The council, Cohen and Wolf, put together for that opportunity.
Michael, they looking to rent the entire building?
Yes.
Entire building?
Yeah, I, yeah, even though they don't need all of that space, they probably eventually hopefully will grow into it to do some more community planning, or certainly let Walter, Walt speak to that, but, and then I wouldn't want, I don't think it'd be fair, I don't think we wanna cut that space up and have multiple tenants. So, yes, it's, it's bigger than what they currently have, but I think that, I think it'd be great to keep their presence here in town and allow them to grow and to do more programming.
And I know library uses some of that for storage. Would that be able to, I mean, friends of the library or something store books or something there currently?
Yes, yeah, they do.
Would that be able to stay there?
I think it, I think it could, and certainly, you know, based on the square footage they need of the main hall and the front, front hall or the front office space being there, or even the back space. Just think of it, I think of the building as, as cut up into three sections. When you walk through the front door, there's a sort of office space, and then there's a, you know, a doorway, and it goes into the larger hall, and then behind that, that has a partition to what I call the, the third space. So, in any sense, I think that Totoka TV will be occupying the, the middle space, and certainly we could work with them on carving out space so that the library could continue to do their, their stuff for storage, anyway. And I don't think they take up a lot.
There's also a full basement and an attic. I don't know if they're usable.
I, yeah, I don't know if they're usable either. I have not seen them.
No, I haven't been in there either.
The concept is a good one, but the numbers just don't work for the town. You, you've got gross rent of only ten thousand dollars in excess of the cost to refit the building right now. I can't believe over five years, we're not gonna have to expend in excess of ten thousand dollars to maintain the building. So unless, I mean, the lease is structured with all costs of maintenance being picked up by the tenant, this is, this is gonna lose money for the town. Or that thirty-five to thirty-eight thousand dollars you're projecting to repairs has to be paid.
Well, the, the other thing, I guess, based on our earlier conversation, you know, about the, in W P C A is, I mean, we're, the proposal right now is that you lock in for five years at eight hundred dollars, and there's no, there's no cost increase over those five years on, on the rent. And I understand that Totoka TV would be incurring costs to move from their current location to this location. Personally, I, I can't see locking into eight hundred dollars for five years a month. That there should be some kind of a graduated increase in the, in the rent over that five-year period also.
I'm more concerned with expenses for maintenance and repair, because if eight hundred goes to nine hundred, that's still not gonna cover the cost of maintaining that Because if eight hundred goes to nine hundred, that's still not going to cover the cost of maintaining that building for five years.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think there's a certain budget that we've got figured in there to, not, not a whole lot right now, just carrying that as a vacant building.
How hard are those numbers that you project for repairs of thirty-five to thirty-eight thousand?
I think they're, I think they're pretty good. I mean, the biggest, the two big, two biggest items in there are the, the painting and the ramp that go.
The handicap ramp?
Yes, handicap ramp.
So Franny, have you looked at this, I'm assuming? And?
Yeah, in fact, we, we, Joe, we, we did try to look at, you know, the way to, to cut the, cut the number on the ramp, you could put it in the front because the, the rise is, is minimal. But, you know, it's one way to do it, and we would save, I don't know, four, five thousand right there, but it would look, it wouldn't.
What's across the painting building?
Estimated quote would be about seventeen thousand, I think we had.
So half of that expenditure is for painting?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's got to be some, you know.
And it has to be painted?
It doesn't have to be painted.
If we're getting eight hundred bucks a month, I really don't feel like spending seventeen thousand dollars to paint. Bring the building up to be a nice spiffy building. What's the condition of the roof?
If you don't paint.
For the town, he's got an appraisal of three hundred and ninety thousand. So if we sold it for three ninety or four hundred thousand, we'd bring in about five thousand a year in taxes.
Isn't that, isn't that property tied to the cemetery?
I keep asking that question and no one has given us an answer.
We should be able to go to, Mike, shouldn't you see that on a deed for that property? It would, it should explain it if there isn't a restriction.
Sure, my, yeah, I, I haven't seen it in writing, but my recollection is that, from what I've heard historically, that that is the case, that the building goes.
What's the condition of the roof? I don't see that listed as a repair.
Not, not leaking at this point, unknown. I, I don't have a report on, on, on the, I don't know if anybody's been up there recently. It's, it's going to have to be, again, to Joe's, Joe's point, it's going to have to be addressed in the, I would say, the next, you know, five.
It was probably twenty years ago, right, Franny, when we did the roof?
It was when we did the renovation. It was like eighty-seven, thirty plus years.
So it needs a roof.
Within the five years, you had a roof?
Yeah.
There goes your ten thousand dollar profit. Is there a requirement or a desire to, to keep that as a, any renovations done to it to an historical-type code or no?
None that I'm aware of, no. It might, it may be.
No, I'm just, I'm asking if it is or?
Historical roof, that's on there now. Just asphalt shingles.
He says there's no historical roof on it now.
There's your basic asphalt shingles, that's it. I mean, it's a really neat building, and this is a good use of it.
It is, yes.
We're supposed to be looking at, hey, this building's been.
And I'd like to meet the person that would pay three ninety for it.
This building's been costing us money for so many years, guys. If we're getting eight hundred dollars or a thousand dollars, eventually, it's worth it.
So what's the opportunity to possibly split it up and get a second rent in there?
Parking becomes an issue.
Right.
Yeah.
Parking's the big issue now, and this is a.
That's the Achilles' heel.
I mean, this is a good use of it because they have minimal parking needs.
How does Totoka TV make money?
There's Walter.
There's no ads.
No. So my name is Walter Mann, and I manage three separate nonprofit entities, Branford Community Television, BCTV, North Haven Community Television, NHTV, and Totoka TV, which is North Branford Public Cable Access Group. The stations are all separately operated, separate boards of directors, and funded the same way in that the state requires the cable companies, in this case Comcast and Frontier, to fund us on a per-subscriber rate each year. So roughly, North Branford TV gets about fifty-eight thousand a year, roughly, give or take, from Comcast and Frontier. That's the only funding that Totoka TV receives. We, just as, as a few notes, we provide as a service at our cost the staff to tape the town council, water pollution control meetings, the Board of Ed meetings. We attain grants for about, roughly a hundred thousand dollars, slightly less, to put in new television production equipment here, the robotic cameras, the equipment in the other room. We recently just were able to start airing these meetings live on Facebook, and we are going to be working on that with the Board of Ed to attain that same goal. But, you know, we, we do do a lot for the town. Also, as a matter of comparison, in Branford, the town of Branford rents us space, about a thousand square feet, roughly, in one of their buildings, four thousand dollars a year, a year. In North Haven, we are in a commercial building. The rent is higher, obviously, but we do get support from the town of North Haven to the tune of about forty thousand a year in addition to the funding from Comcast and Frontier, plus we do fundraising in North Haven. North Branford Totoka TV is kind of like in the early stages of what those stations have become in terms of, we do fundraising in Branford and North Haven with a forty-mile bike tour, which raises about ten thousand for BCTV. We do a fruit sale, a chowder booth at the North Haven Fair, which raises about ten thousand for NHTV. So we hope to get Totoka TV to those levels. But that's how we're funded and that's kind of how we operate. And I just wanted to give you that background, so.
Thank you.
Yep. We have come into the situation that we're at now because our present location, which we've been at for at least ten years with five-year lease renewals, the rent is going to go up significantly if we renew as of October first. So we started looking a few months, or maybe four months ago, at options. We looked at another space on Foxen Road, closer to East Haven, but in North Branford, and it would be within about five hundred dollars of what our, you know, raised rent would be at our present location. So, you know, that's significant for us, and we looked at North Haven as an option because I can work out an agreement with the same landlord where North Haven TV is to get space in that same building for not only lower, much lower than what we would pay in a renewal here, but even lower than what we're paying now. And that certainly is an option, but, you know, obviously, there's people, including myself, that would risk to keep Totoka TV in North Branford, but North Haven is certainly an option. But we look at the sixteen seventy-five Foxon, as others have said, as a very good option in so many ways, so wanted to add that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, so I, so is there a reason a five-year lease was asked for? Because I see the notes here from Roger Solway, the EDC coordinator and stuff, and they had suggested an extended three-year lease. So I guess I'd just ask why the, you know, to lock into five years at that price rather than a three-year?
No, that's, I mean, that's flexible. Walter had mentioned the, the five, but, you know, it's where the comfort level of the council is. And again, any number of these items, you know, I think some of these obviously code, but to Joe's point, painting? Yeah, it's not, it's not a requirement, it's not a, you know, we could, we could skirt that, do that at, at the end of the three years and paint it, or paint it somewhere down the line. I mean, but obviously, you're going to need a roof too. But I think the reuse and, I mean, if we don't get anybody in there, we're just going to be looking at this saying, God, what do we, what do we do with this?
Right, we would still have to put a roof on if no one's in it.
It's been empty for so long.
Right.
How much do you pay in taxes now on your personal equipment?
Well, we're a five oh one C four, North Branford, this Totoka TV, so we're taxed.
So there's an item in here that says they're going to pay taxes on all. Twenty-seventh, all taxes on personal property located in the premises shall be paid in full in a timely manner by the tenant directly to the town. Oh, this is a Branford deal, okay. Wrong town.
I think just to the five-year issue, and why we suggested that was, there's going to be some cost besides moving in terms of paying Comcast for a five relocation from here. So, you know, in expending those dollars, five years would be preferred, but certainly grow to three if that's what is necessary.
You want to make a motion?
Well, I would just, I'd go back to, I, I hate to lock into the eight hundred dollars a month for five years. So either there's some kind of a graduated rent increase or it's a shorter term.
Actually, I got to bring this up again. I stand corrected. It is on the lease agreement for North Branford. Item number twenty-six or twenty-seven says you're going to pay taxes. It's, the only thing it says is it says that you're going to pay them to the town of Branford, but it's in our lease agreement.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what we're doing here, but it seems to be like an emotional tug of war that we have to maintain Totoka TV in North Branford. He's got an option in North Haven for a very reasonable lease. It's not going to deprive North Branford of public TV service, and he continues to operate. Why are we taking on a burden? We're going to lose money.
Well, I think we're all looking at it because it's just an empty building now.
We have a burden now. We've been having.
That we are losing, we're losing money on it now because we're not.
How long's that building been empty, Fran?
Seventeen thousand dollars, Russ.
Yeah, well, we don't have to paint. I mean, if that, I mean, that is a large cost.
Franny, how long's that building been empty?
Empty ever since.
Five years?
Right, so.
So that's seven years. So the, the estimated capital expenditure of thirty-five to thirty-eight can easily be cut in half, roughly. Painting is roughly seventeen, so seventeen off the thirty-five, so now we're down to eighteen thousand. And in the seven years that we've had the building, we've had to insure it and maintain it and everything else. I, I don't know if it, if that has amounted to eighteen thousand dollars, but I look at it as we get a viable tenant to go into that building and use the building. Otherwise, it's just going to stay empty. It's, it's not.
Retirade even more.
It's a hard sell. Well, we, we should have, I would, I would think that we should have some, some historical numbers from two thousand eleven to now, what it costs for that unit per year, right? I think that's an important number to see. Franny, are there any utilities hooked up and operating on that building now?
There's electricity because the fire alarm's still active.
Yeah, what about water?
Negative.
So we're not heating it?
Well, we, no, it's.
We drain the, yeah, there's electricity on a monthly basis.
All right, so nominal electricity to monitor the alarm system.
And insurance.
Insurance. And, and the insurance company views a vacant building as more of a risk than an occupied building, so the rates are a little higher, I think, for the vacant buildings that we have. Auger House, that one, you see, three million dollars.
And then even if you, even if we outlay the, the capital to make these some improvements, there's still going to be an ongoing maintenance. And that's somewhat unknown, it's not going to be exact, but there's going to be something that's got to be fixed, usually all the time.
It's going to turn into the Auger House. Eyesore.
Without a tenant?
Without a tenant.
Yeah.
Just deteriorating for our eyes.
Yeah.
And if nothing else, we have an obligation to keep up that which is ours, so it's the same thing. But I, I don't know whether that, how that valuation that was put on it is accurate. Three hundred thousand dollars for, for that.
Three hundred and ninety thousand?
Yeah, that's, that's what the assessor has on it.
Yeah, well.
And nobody's contesting that because nobody's paying taxes on it. What is the status of the Auger House?
Sad.
Eyesore.
We don't have any projected use for that, do we?
We had a tentative.
I thought, yeah, some of the historical.
Conservation Trust is going to look at it, but.
Yeah, working to get the, the assessment of historical assessment grant to get it on the register, to get funds to try and shore that building up and reuse with the land trust, yeah. So there's potential there for reuse with, with the land trust.
But the land trust, would they pay rent? They don't have any money.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know if we want to get any historical preservation money on a building that if we are going to have a big future plan, you might want to knock down someday. And I'm not sure that that house has much of a historical history. The Auger House.
Probably just the re-air it was built, that's about it, you know?
You're talking about the Auger House?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I just think, you know, you, you start taking money from, for the historical thing, and then all of a sudden, it's like, oh, you're not knocking that down, we gave you, it's historical.
So may, maybe with the, the town hall, maybe there's something that we can make a shorter, a shorter lease with, you know, renewables and do minimal, minimal, whatever's the minimum to get it safe.
Yeah, make a, make a motion for three years, you know? I mean, let's, we have to do something.
Yeah, but, so what's the rent? Are we all okay with the eight hundred dollars?
I'm okay with eight hundred dollars.
Um.
You can't get much more. Eight hundred's better than nothing.
Okay, so do we have to include what we're going to do for renovations in this motion? Or are we just first approving the lease?
That's the second motion.
Oh, okay. Well, that's just for painting, so.
Right, I think that second, second item would go away if we're not going to paint. You just, the council's comfortable with a three-year lease and put, put a price tag on the, I mean, in terms of a three-year term, but put the rent at, maybe you want to graduate it, maybe it, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's an economic killer to say, you know, you go from eight hundred to, to nine hundred.
We could tie it into the, yeah, yeah.
I would suggest that.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve a lease with, between the town of North Branford and North Branford Public Cable Access Group for a term of three years. Initial rent, eight hundred dollars a month, and the lease would start, what is your effective date that you need, Walter?
Well, certainly a little later than October first, and certainly if we can get in there a little earlier to kind of look after whatever we need to do.
Okay, a lease starting October first of two thousand eighteen and rent increases tied to the Consumer Price Index.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
That was for three years?
Three years.
Three years.
So I, I'm okay with this, but I do want to just say this. So I've been on the council a lot of years, and this is probably the tenth time that this building's come up, and it's the same old, same old. It's like, somebody asks the question, well, does the cemetery go with it, does it not? And it's the same town manager answer. I think historically, that's what they say. So what I want to do is find out, and if we have to spend some money with the attorneys, find out.
It's one person.
Okay, but that doesn't mean it can't be divided and sold.
That's true.
Okay, so I agree it's one parcel, because that was an old meeting house. That was the old town hall. So.
What is the conclusion from what you looked up on?
This is the engineer's GIS system. It's point nine seven of an acre, the whole course of putting the.
Cemetery is with it.
It's all one person, right?
All right, so it has to be subdivided, and it would need a variance before it could be subdivided, so that's doable. It's clearly a hardship. You're not going to relocate a cemetery.
Right.
So you subdivide. It's still simple. What we're doing is short-sighted and a waste of money.
That was, that was the point I was making. But I figured we've done it for so long, I'm okay with three more years.
Just want to ask one question. Is there a possibility to somehow include?
Is there a possibility to somehow include an option for an additional three years based upon a mutually agreeable rental cost for the second term?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. That can be added into the lease.
Can you just make sure someone proofreads the lease?
Courtney's got it.
Because if there is any taxes paid.
They're paying it to Branford. You haven't reviewed the lease yet?
Personally, I have not, but it has been reviewed.
Well, tell whoever did that we're in North Branford.
I will, I will.
So, we want all those non-tax dollars.
I will emphasize that.
All right, roll call.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
No.
Council Miller?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Viglione?
Yes.
Council Zampiano?
Yes.
All right, do we want to address a review and approval of specifications for RFP number three, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, for painting at sixteen seventy-five Foxen Road?
No.
No.
Okay. Consensus with everybody on that? All right, next we have side letter agreement, acting chief of police.
Hold up, before we get past the painting, don't we need to address the code issues? We got to have it done by October first now. See, Joe, we're spending money already.
Can we spend more?
I mean, I don't think we can just, I don't think we can just leave this.
Right, you're right. Your point is well taken. I think it's, I think the motion, I think the whole process continued upon Walters' board approving and signing the lease that it will trigger any, any action for us to spend money.
So, there was a outline of potential cap, page eighty-five of our packet. So.
Replace the oil tank. Was that above ground or in the ground, Fran? Where's that? So, how big is it?
Two seventy-five.
Two seventy-five?
Yeah.
I will donate a brand-new fiberglass two seventy-five tank for free. So, you just got to have somebody switch it.
Got it.
And he's got the man to do it.
So, we need the boiler tune up?
The replacement of two.
Can your guy do the boiler tune up?
Yeah.
So, we got rid of that. Except for parts.
Those are just parts. They're pretty far.
Oh, that's just parts.
Yeah, it involves all laborers, but how it works on everything else.
Painting, we don't have to worry about painting. Two rear, two doors at the rear of the building?
Yeah. Just the door itself, not the frame. It's a wooden door. Need the same hardware.
Installation of one staircase landing on west-side entrances. Was that your handicap ramp, or?
No, that's the steps on the west side, precast steps with a ramp.
Is that necessary, Fran?
What's that?
A stairway there?
Yes. The emergency exit.
Handicap accessible ramp. That's in front of the building.
Fran, do you need something for taking out the old tank?
I'm sorry?
You need something for taking out and getting rid of the old tank?
The old tank?
Do you need money for the?
Rebuilding, still, you can figure it out. Yeah, it's about, it's just sitting on a slot.
Yep.
If you're changing the handicap to the front, that cost will be reduced?
Well, whatever, whatever you decide. I mean, the front, the reason they have put the front, it's all, I mean, it's really all railing. It's only thirteen inches, but then they were, we decided just to rip the one on the side out, because otherwise, we got to put a set of stairs there anyway. I got to rip this, I have to rip the old handicap ramp out, we don't want the reason to put, so we're going to look at maybe possibly doing it in wood instead of cement.
You mean the one on the east, east side of the building?
Yeah.
There's two there.
Yeah, the back one, we don't, we have that one ramp.
Okay.
The other one was one for a loading dock, so they get a location.
Is that, do we have central air?
Yeah.
So, we would need a motion for the renovation project. I mean, there's nothing on our agenda here. So, I would like to make a motion to add item thirteen N, renovation of sixteen, cost of renovation of sixteen seventy-five Foxen Road.
Second.
We can't just change thirteen H?
I don't see why we can't just delete some items.
But there's no motion on here.
Suggested motion, North Branford Town Council hereby authorizes issuance of bid specifications for the exterior painting. So, we just change that motion? Or we can't?
It just might be neater to add thirteen N, I think.
Okay.
Looking at it in this agency?
Yeah.
Now, we're going to get two months rent up front. We got to get our money going, you know?
Okay, so, so the motion was to add, adjust, add that item, so.
Yeah, renovation of sixteen seventy-five Foxen Road, North Branford.
Yes, and George second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
No.
Council Miller?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Viglione?
Yes.
Council Zampiano?
Yes.
All right, next item is side letter agreement, acting chief of police.
I make a motion that the town council approve the side letter agreement with the acting chief of police.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah. I've, I've read the side letter, and I do not believe that we can possibly enter into this agreement at the costs that are being put upon us.
What are you referring to, for your side salary?
Well, this is a raise for the candidate that is totally out of proportion to. It's just totally out of proportion. It is increasing, increasing this employee's salary by thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Isn't this comparable to what the chief was making before he retired?
Yes.
And we're asking somebody to take on the responsibilities of the chief. So, how do you do that without compensating him as the chief?
Well, you know, the chief had forty-four years' experience, and presumably someone who has less experience would be compensated at a lesser rate. I have no idea what the rate would be, or the salary range for which we will advertise this position, but, but this is in actuality, a greater rate than we're, than we valued the chief's contract originally, because the original salary that we were told that the chief had was a hundred nineteen. This is a hundred twenty. You know, I don't know how, how we justify this. Would you mind saying that? It makes, it doesn't make any sense to me.
But the person, but this person is taking on the role and performing all the duties that normally would be performed by the chief.
Yeah, I don't care if it's one nineteen or one twenty.
The chief was, chief was the base salary of one nineteen, but his benefits were certainly well above that.
Right. I think the town attorney was.
And his monetary value was well above that.
We're asking somebody to take on the responsibilities, to step in the breach on very short notice, and the fact that they don't have experience is not their fault. It's our actions in terms of negotiating a resolution with the chief that resulted in his retirement. So, I don't see why we should penalize this person for actually accommodating the town and stepping up.
To the, I just wanted to chime in that, to the extent that this was essentially the equivalent of the salary of the chief of police at the time of his retirement, and because Lieutenant Lovelace is stepping into that role and acting in an interim basis, it's, it's just the best practice to have it at that rate.
But after July first, there would have been a raise anyways.
Correct.
So, I mean, it's, it's probably less than what he would have been being paid. Yes.
Is there a second?
Second?
Is there a motion or a second?
I made the motion, but I don't know if somebody seconded it.
I'll second it.
Council Fawnin, did you, Joe?
I don't, I may, yes, I think I did. I got to check with her. I did, okay. Yes, I did.
Roll call.
Well, and just in the side letter agreement, can we just change the word resign to retired? Because I believe he retired effective June thirtieth.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Miller?
No.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Viglione?
Yes.
Council Zampiano?
Yes.
Next is side letter agreement, acting lieutenant.
I'll make the motion that the town council approve the side letter agreement for the acting lieutenant.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Does the same thing, to change the word resign to retired.
Now, we have a, a side letter where an employee is not stepping up to take another position, but is in fact accepting a second position. So, now he has to do two jobs, where Lieutenant Lovelace takes on one job. Just seems somewhat wrong-headed. He's still saddled with the detective division, has a full-time obligation, and now he has the lieutenantcy.
I guess if he's prepared to do that, we should look at it as good fortune for the town?
It'd be nice to move everybody up on the ladder, but you can't. So, you only got two positions that you could slide up.
Also, just to chime in, with respect to a position that's within the bargaining unit, these types of changes in terms of duties and responsibilities can't be unilaterally imposed by the town. They have to be negotiated, as is the case here. So, where this motion and this agreement are coming before the council, it's subject to the negotiations and tentative agreement of the parties on this. So, it's not something that the town could do unilaterally, and both the union and the employee would be willing to have him assume these duties on the interim basis provided herein.
Roll call.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Miller?
No.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Viglione?
Yes.
Council Zampiano?
Yes.
Next is appropriation transfers.
As we wind down the seventeen, eighteen fiscal year, several departments are making transfers to balance their budgets. I did notice one type book on the first page in the police section, the full-time account should be the one oh one account, and the, on the overtime should be one oh three, not four oh three. If there is any questions on any specific transfers, I'd be happy to address them.
So, it's, I just noticed here, since we were talking, the sixty-five, seventy-five for utilities on outlined buildings not budgeted? What exactly is that? Outlined bu, buildings?
Well, I think there was an assumption that the, something would happen to sixteen seventy-five Foxen Road and the Auger House, and there was no budget, there's utilities out there at both of those buildings, again, for fire alarms, things like that, that were not budgeted, with the hope that some finite mysterious thing would happen, and those buildings would go away. But.
Anthony, on, on police, you got to change forty-two, ten, one oh three to one oh one?
Right, I said one oh one, and the second one should be one oh three.
Four, one oh three.
Correct.
All right, somebody want to move that?
So, moved with, the account numbers changed as noted.
Somebody second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Miller?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Viglione?
Yes.
Council Zampiano?
Yes.
Next is tax refunds. Or, Ken, sorry, contingency appropriations.
First contingency, recall back when the seventeen, eighteen budget was being crafted, there was a potential at that time to move to the state health plan, and it was two hundred thousand dollars that was taken out of the health insurance line and put into contingency. That way, we would achieve a savings. Obviously, it did not materialize in seventeen, eighteen, so we're moving the two hundred thousand dollars back from contingency to the health insurance line.
Motion.
So moved.
Second. Somebody second it?
Second.
All right. Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Miller?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Viglione?
Yes.
Council Zampiano?
Yes.
Anthony, I just have a question. Where the payout to the chief on his sickened vacation time, where did that come out of?
That came out of the employee. If you look on the third page of the transfers, you'll see eighty-seven, four ninety-five being put into the employee liability account.
And, yep.
That's where some of that is, that related to.
Okay.
There's a budget narrative, typically annually, but that obviously exceeded.
Okay.
Next is tax refunds.
So moved. Second. First time I've ever only seen one.
Tax refunds?
I, I said, I.
Yeah, we got it.
All right, discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Miller?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Council Viglione?
Yes.
Council Zampiano?
Yes.
And next item is renovation of sixteen seventy-five Foxen Road, North Branford.
I add the numbers that are in the sheet that was provided, comes to sixteen thousand one hundred dollars of cost, a ten percent contingency, so the number should be seventeen of cost, a ten percent contingency, so the number should be seventeen thousand seven ten. That's what I got as the total number. And just make sure that's the eighteen nineteen contingency. The first one was a seventeen eighteen contingency, this is the eighteen nineteen.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. I'll just wait. To approve renovations to sixteen seventy-five Foxen Road, to include a handicap accessible ramp, installation of a staircase on the west side, replacement of two doors at the rear of the building, boiler tune-up and contingency, not to exceed seventeen thousand seven ten, which will be coming out of the two thousand eighteen nineteen contingency.
Second.
Discussion?
Should we say based on cable, uh, Tortuga TV's board approval, that they're going forward with it? Or?
Yes, that's included.
But I don't know, when are they gonna do that?
They're working the next Tuesday night, so I would assume, I guess, with that, although I guess certainly we'll be able to.
No, that'd be fine.
So I'll just, uh.
It's gonna take, it's gonna take Courtney's firm to draw up the lease, or you gotta rework the lease a little bit?
We will review the lease and make revisions.
So.
I just wanna amend the motion that this is contingent upon, um, the lease being negotiated between Tortuga TV and the town.
Negotiated and executed.
Okay.
Finalized.
Somebody'll resecond that?
Second.
With the change? Okay, discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Viglione?
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano?
Yes.
Citizen statements and petitions?
Wow, quiet. Was there a, uh, I'm sorry, just for the record, a second on the?
I have the, um, Deputy Mayor Angeloni moved.
Mr. Murray, second.
Okay, thank you.
Well, George init- did this initial, and then I am added to the motion.
And then Marie.
And then I seconded it.
Marie seconded it again. All right, citizen statements, petitions, seeing none. Move into executive session, the first two executive sessions, which is strategic negotiations. It's gonna be tabled, and valuation town manager's gonna be tabled. Finally, execution, uh, executive session with the police commission on, on issues, police commission issues.
Well, personnel issues.
Personnel issue.
To include?
Police commissioners, town manager.
Town attorney.
Town attorney.
Second, I, I, I make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.